Welcome to the November 2nd. It's my dad's birthday. Bless his heart. Lain Community College Board of Education meeting. Welcome to everyone present and welcome to those who may be viewing online. I, it's, my name is Rosie Pryor. It's my pleasure to call the meeting to order and ask Celia if you would call the role, please.
Yes, Mike Ister.
Here.
Lisa Fragala.
Here.
Austin Fodenagi.
Here.
Holly Johnson.
Here.
Steve Mattel.
Here.
Rosie Pryor.
Here.
Angela Van Kraus.
Present.
Uh, I would like to inform everyone who is viewing or who is present tonight. We have a number of board members who are participating via Zoom. At least one is not going to have his camera on for most of the meeting. He tells me because he's contracted COVID and he's still coughing a lot and he doesn't want to disturb the meeting. And so I, I hope, uh, I hope that the family is doing okay and um, that you are as well. And any other board member who finds a need to turn off your camera, I know you'll have a good reason for doing so. The board members are always encouraged to keep their cameras on, but should you need to turn it off, we'll understand. So having said that, I want to move to a land recognition and I call on Ms. Tracy Henninger-Willy.
I'd like to start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we're on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapuya people. The Kalapuya were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted and destroyed. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapuya. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda for this evening's meeting? Uh, there being none is there a motion to approve the, or to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second. That you Lisa? Okay, that was Mike and then Lisa. Uh, and I think we will unanimously adopt the agenda. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment. I understand we have a number of people who would like to address the board this evening, both uh, here in our meeting room and um, among those who are viewing the meeting online. So do we have the list?
Uh, yes, I'd like to call up Jessica Alvarado.
And do we have a timekeeper handy?
Timer is ready.
Uh, please be advised that we encourage those who speak to the board to keep your comments to three minutes. Um, the board does not respond directly to issues raised, but will refer those issues to the president for appropriate action. Please use the raised hand feature in the meeting and I will uh, unmute your speaker and call on you in the order you joined the meeting. We're going to alternate between individuals who are present here this evening and those who are participating online. Ms. Jessica, you're on.
Thank you. This is a time, place and manner statement. I have provided this written statement and attachments to Celia Wright for you to review at a later time. To President Bulger, Vice Presidents Matthew Staller, Writing and Lain's Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a verbal statement. As a longtime employee of Lain and alumni and active governance participant, I wish to provide some history regarding the current COPs policy addressing time, place and manner. See attached, that could be impacted by the most recent recommended changes to BP 3900. These are in conflict with the COPs policy approved by the college council June of 2018. Use of facilities of public spaces for external groups. Please see the attached BP 6700 that is similar to the COPs policy eventually posted as reviewed in December of 2018. These two policies seem to be in alignment with each other. I want to thank this board for recognizing the importance of time, place and manner policies for outside groups and at the same time I'm requesting the stakeholders have a seat at the table in revisioning and updating this work if it is deemed necessary. History, in October of 2017, an outside group came to campus displaying very large scale anti-abortion images. In addition, this group used loudspeakers and traveled through the parking lots to express their point of view, but primarily focus their efforts in Bristow Square. Due to a series of unexpected changes, the vetting process was disrupted and the group ended up disturbing teaching environments and a number of complaints from students and staff came to the attention of the president's office. These concerns were shared with the college council and a task force was developed to address current COPs policies that could influence decision-making for future outside groups coming to campus. The Bristol Square Task Force chaired by myself included faculty, staff and students as well as administrators. Existing board and COPs policies were reviewed, public forums were hosted. Lain's legal counsel was consulted and all employee groups were invited to provide perspectives and eventually a written report was provided to President Hamilton. Recommendations were provided to balance the need to prevent disturbances to educational spaces by outside groups while also maintaining the integrity of free speech and a marketplace of public opinion. President Hamilton then reviewed the submitted report and provided a summary response. By June of 2018, a time, place and manner policy was agreed upon and approved by college council. This is a shining example of collaborative inclusive, inclusive policy development within our shared governance system. It's vital that the work previously completed and current perspectives of stakeholder groups be an integral part of any next steps in considering board policy changes. It is not legally required to add a new policy that restricts students and employees when we already have a time, place and manner policy. At this time, the recommended changes are not something I can support.
Thank you. Erin Bartley.
Good evening, members of the board and President Bulger. My name is Erin Bartley and I'm a faculty member in writing and literature here at Lain. I am reading a statement on behalf of another full-time faculty member who was unable to attend tonight's meeting. We are fortunate that we have a long tradition in the United States of enjoying broad academic freedom. And the UN Human Rights Council believes that such freedom is a critical part of a democratic society. A UN report recommends that educational institutions, quote, "ensure that members of academic communities have protection against coercion by third parties, whether the state or groups in society." This requires in particular institutions to stand up for members of their communities who face attack or restriction owing to the exercise of their academic freedom, end quote. "We are fortunate to live in a society governed not by the authoritarian force of the state, but by the democratic participation of its citizens. As you vote on this policy, I want you to know that any decision you make tonight is significant. In our democracy, you have been elected to serve an important role in leading our community. Your decisions directly affect what occurs in the classroom." Peter Hessler, a University of Pittsburgh professor teaching at Sichuan University in the PRC, describes teaching under conditions of extreme censorship, quote, "Some of my most powerful memories from the classroom and fooling involve incidents in which I made a statement that touched even obliquely on a sensitive aspect of Chinese history or politics. At such moments, the room would fall silent and students would stare at their desks. It was a visceral response and it became the same for me. Looking out over the bowed heads, my heart raced and my face grew hot," end quote. A minor row was caused after someone posted Hessler's grading comments online because they mildly questioned the party line. As a result, Hessler's contract was not renewed after the pandemic, but it wasn't pulled by the Chinese authorities, it was pulled by the University of Pittsburgh.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh, Jim Salt followed by Claire Danenbaum.
Good evening. My name is Jim Salt. I'm a sociology instructor in my 25th year here at Lain Community College. In a previous role, I had the responsibility for attending over 150 board meetings, LCC board meetings. Uh, and in those 150 board meetings, I never witnessed the board consider or the administration propose a more stunningly problematic policy proposal than the censorship proposal the board has been asked to approve tonight. This policy would give the administration the ability to censor faculty and staff in areas across the college and would fundamentally violate perhaps the most cherished principle of higher education across our country, across the world, that principle of academic freedom. This principle is much greater than that of a single institution. Uh, it's, it, it not, it much greater than the authority of a board or the powers of the administration or, or the, or the, you know, the role of the faculty in, in, in the classroom. That this is, this is perhaps the most important principle of, in, in all of a higher education across the world. And it's, is, and is at risk directly under this, uh, under this proposal. Um, it, there is, there, thing of what problem is this is supposed to alleviate? Uh, but I can guarantee you that it would create a serious problem for this college. Faculty and other defenders of academic freedom are not going to accept a proposed, a, 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 a policy that violates these, the, these principles as soon as, and it would happen very quickly as soon as there's some alleged violation of this policy. You know, th- there's going to be tremendous and public um, conflict that is, that seriously threatens, would seriously threaten the reputation of this college potentially nationally. Please understand the significance of this proposal. I beg the board to, to remove this matter from the consent agenda as I last understood is currently listed in. And in a work item, in a, in a, in an agenda item to table this proposed policy permanently with strong prejudice. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening, board and President Bulger. My name is Claire Danenbaum. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as a librarian concerned about two policies proposed on the agenda. BP 3900 regarding free speech on campus and 3710 regarding materials created by faculty and students. Both of these proposals are in conflict with existing campus policies. One of the things I do here as a librarian is help students develop skills for academic research and information literacy. Academic research requires what I call walking around the problem, a process of seeing an issue from multiple vantage points. Students learn to look for foundational information about a problem or a thesis as a framework to understand that issue more broadly. Students learn to ask guiding questions as a method to better understand what they don't currently know and what they might need to learn in order to find a sensible solution. Students explore communities of practice and how to discern conflicting viewpoints. And finally, students learn how to use an equity lens in evaluating how information is created and accessed. This step is critical to understanding why some narratives rise to the top of any issue and become the status quo and why other narratives are thwarted, diminished or deemed irrelevant. Used together, these practices create a rigorous approach to inquiry. They promote critical thinking and problem solving. I watched a video recording of the October work session in which LCC board members discussed multiple policy revisions. There were 26 minutes of specific discussion about the nature, the possible implications and possible impacts of these policy changes. 26 minutes. There was no interrogation of the issues, no real analysis that I could discern, no consultation with stakeholders and no application of an equity lens. Neither of these policies were evaluated in the context of the fraught state of political discourse in our country today or the potential for their misuse. Neither were analyzed in relation to existing policies already in place in COPs or in the faculty contract. No one in the room suggested further input from our own campus experts on OER and freedom of speech for background or general context. So tonight I want to suggest that the board adopt the tools that we expect students to use when undertaking research and problem solving. Get background information on policies already in place. Ask critical questions about the issues. Seek input from practitioners and community stakeholders. I sincerely hope that the board and our new president understand the response tonight. We are an institution that exists in community and we need our policies to be shaped with intention, with transparency and community values at the core. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just no more Zoom.
Okay.
Wendy Simmons.
Thank you. Good evening. And I'm reading a two-part statement and ask that Peggy Oberstaller could follow. I'm a faculty member in the Health Professions Department and I'm reading a statement on behalf of the LCC EA and the LCC OER librarian. We are writing as representatives of the 450 part-time and full-time faculty at Lain Community College to share our concerns about the two proposed board policies on copyright and intellectual property rights. First, these are not consistent with Article 18 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, our CBA with faculty, which protects faculty members' intellectual property rights. Our CBA, our contract between the LCC Board of Education and the LCC EA provides that faculty retain intellectual property rights over their work as long as they have not received compensation, for example, curriculum development funding or release time specifically for the development of the work. If the college does not compensate or provide release to faculty specifically to develop work, to develop work such as curricular materials, lecture notes, et cetera, the faculty member retains rights for what they have created. In addition, if the faculty member is compensated or released specifically for the purpose of producing materials and the materials are later used commercially, the, this faculty member retains equity in the materials after the college recovers its investment. This protection for faculty intellectual property rights is a long settled issue which been, has been in place since at least 1985. It is unclear why there would be a proposal that the board adopts policies that violate a contract with an employee group. Any such policy could not be enforced because contracts supersedes policy. We think it would send the wrong message and could be legally questionable for the board to adopt a policy that would violate a collective bargaining agreement if implemented.
Second, copyrighting OERs, which are open educational resources developed by faculty, would contravene the entire purpose of OERs, which is to provide open access to free instructional materials to students and to share them among faculty within and across institutions. For OERs, a much more appropriate approach for faculty who create them and wish to share them would be to add open licenses to their works. Ensuring that LCC copyrights are not added to the OERs is critical for keeping overall costs down for students here at LCC and anywhere OERs developed by LCC faculty are used. Third, copyrighting the work of employees and students impacts many individuals beyond faculty. If such a policy were implemented, who would advocate for students and their rights to their own work? Is it appropriate for students' artwork and writings to be owned by the college? We urge you to discontinue consideration of adopting the copyright and intellectual property rights policies and encourage you to consider what problems the policy seeks to solve and engage all stakeholder groups, including experts, in addressing the actual issues. If the board nevertheless moves forward to adopt any copyright policy, we urge you to include the language indicating it applies, except as provided by collective bargaining agreements and any other agreements, given that this issue is a mandatory subject of bargaining, which means negotiation is required. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this issue and your commitment to Lain Community College.
Thank you.
Christina Howard.
Hi, I'm going to shift topics for a moment. Uh, I'm Christina Howard. I coordinate the physical therapist assistant program here at Lain Community College. Uh, we have two campuses here, actually. We serve students here in Eugene and we also serve students down in White City, Oregon, which is a small town uh, just near Medford and through a partnership with Rogue Community Colleges. So those students learn online with students here in Eugene and then they have a lab down there. Um, I'm here to talk about some really, you know, I love being a PT. I'm a physical therapist. I love being a physical therapist, but I never thought I'd love anything more uh, until I am now a physical therapy educator. So what I want to share with you, and I'm so pleased to see Greg in the audience, is that on Friday, my colleague Beth Thorpe, who's a fantastic cooperative education coordinator and helps our students get jobs all over the state, right away before graduation, she and I presented at the 17th Annual Physical Therapy Education Leadership Conference and our topic was academic and clinical remediation using an equity lens. So we were able to take our equity lens application experience here at Lain and I was mentored very well and expertly by Greg and his unflappable focus on improving equity here at Lain and elsewhere. And we presented to over 250 educators, physical therapists, graduate programs, as well as PTA programs on how to approach supporting students using an equity lens. And we were able to present our success plans that we use with students to help them move forward, to set collaborative goal settings, but probably most importantly, to turn the lens on ourselves as a program and identify where we need to improve, where structures and supports that we didn't provide as a program may have contributed to that student's struggle in that particular instance. And we include that as part of the plan to hold ourselves accountable and to make that visible to students that not only are we asking them to come up with plans, but we're also asking them to help us understand where we can be better and writing that down and putting it in a collaborative plan. And I can tell you, it's super intimidating to present to an audience where your professors and people who author the textbooks that you used 25 years ago uh, are listening to you and asking you questions. But I'm so proud of what this college has done to help me through Greg and his team to really take that equity lens and live it and to really look at ourselves very closely and to share the work with others and have others find it so valuable. So I want to give kudos to my colleague Beth Thorpe, who is not here today. She's probably busy placing students in clinicals right now uh, to our program, to all our students who are helping us learn how to be better and how to um, help us all improve so we can all be successful. And I just wanted to uh, share that information. Uh, for those of you don't know, I'm also on the LCC EA board. I'm the vice president of career technical faculty and I really appreciate all the support we have tonight from faculty for the, what's been discussed earlier. But that's why I came.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frankie Coconore followed by Adrian Mitchell.
See all of you in person. It's been a while. So anyways, good evening, President Bulger and members of the Board of Education. I'm Frankie Coconore, president of LCC EF, representing about 200 full-time and 250 part-time contracted or classified professionals at LCC. I will read the first half of the joint LCC EF/LCC EA statement as follows. Adrian Mitchell will read the second half. LCC already has a time, place and manner restriction policy for external groups who come on campus. Among other things, the existing policy was developed by the college council task force after an outside anti-abortion group with an extra-large format photo set up as a display on Bistro Square um, few years ago. The task force worked for a year to develop a policy that would not abrogate the constitutional speech, speech rights of outside groups, yet would provide, provide some limitations on how, when and where such speech could occur. The policy was fully supported by stakeholder groups passed through the shared governance system and also underwent legal review. What the new proposed board policy would do is expand time, place, manner, speech restrictions to everyone on campus, limiting speech by students, employees, student unions and anyone affiliated with LCC. Students and employees are already subject to disciplinary action if they are to take actions that are disruptive to the learning environment. Um, shouting with a blowhorn into a math class is an example given by the board meeting. LCC is not legally required to adopt a new, uh, new time, place, manner, speech restriction policy that expands the existing policy which governs outside groups on, to now apply to students and employees. What the new pro, pop, sorry, can't speak tonight. What the new proposed policy would mean is that the limited designation public forum would have restrictions that limit the time, place, manner, speech, decimal level, poster size, um, et cetera, um, such as student posters, union flyers, student government candidate signs for AL, ALCC representatives, et cetera, could be limited to posting on the public forum locations within the guidelines established. We are especially concerned about the suggestion that Bristol Square would not be a public forum. It has long been a public heart of our campus with events, touches, student-led registration powwow memorial for victims of the Uncoa Community College shooting, a student-led classified jointly sponsored rally with speakers from administration and the Board of Education about funding in higher education and so many more.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Mitchell and I serve as the president of LCC EA representing the 200 full-time and 200, 300 part-time faculty at LCC. I'll read the second half of the joint LCC EA/LCC EF statement. Under the proposed speech policy, the remainder of campus would be explicitly designated as a non-public forum. This means the rest of campus could have more stringent restrictions on speech. For instance, a model Lynn Benton policy cited as an example for the board limits the content and topics of expression, such as posters, speech, other types of expressive acts in all non-public forum locations, including offices and classrooms. This is precisely the type of policy and legislation that is increasingly proposed across the country to limit speech that advocates for and protects marginalized groups. One example in Oregon is the Newburgh School District, which prohibited students and employees' display of pride flags and Black Lives Matter signs, which was the subject of a lawsuit that ultimately overturned the policy. See also the UCLA Critical Race Forward Project tracking for um, more information on these efforts to ban symbols, language and curriculum across the nation. In addition, the proposed LCC board policy also expressly protects students' rights to wear buttons and badges and to post to bulletin boards, but allows no similar protections for employees. Furthermore, after consultation with our attorney, we believe the proposed policy and/or rules created as described in the work session would violate the rights of unions under Oregon's Public Collective Bargaining Act, which allow union-specific rights and protections to access facilities and employees to meet, to communicate, including through banners and signs, rights for public employee unions reinforced and supported by case law. This means that the impact of this law would primarily affect students and student groups in addition to other organizations on campus that may not be unions. The proposed speech restriction policy also stands in stark contrast to another policy on the freedom of inquiry and freedom of expression, which is part of our, that has passed through our governance system. This emphasizes democratic principles as foundational for an educational institution of student learning. The existing policy also protects the rights of members of the campus community to freely and peaceably assemble and demonstrate in accordance with the exercise, the exercise of constitutional rights, so long as such activity does not impede the rights and freedom of others, rights which, which the new proposed policy would curtail. Uh, in sum, we believe the new policy and its implications undermine the foundational principles of our vibrant democracy and the quintessential function of an institution of higher education. Finally, we have, while we have concerns about the proposed policy, we wish to clarify that we strongly support a policy that prohibits hate speech. LCC does have a policy that prohibits hate speech and other types of bias incidents. The rest of the statement can be read in your email. I had to cut out a few parts.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul Bunson followed by Kevin Steves.
Good evening, Board and President Bulger. My name's Paul Bunson and I'm co-chair of our Faculty Council. Right. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunities to speak tonight. Earlier today, we sent you, we sent a letter to the Board regarding the ongoing search for the position of Vice President of Academic Affairs, and I would like to present a shortened version of that letter tonight. We are writing today with concerns regarding the hiring process for the VP of Academic Affairs. The Faculty Council views the process as highly irregular, outside of institutional norms, and incompatible with essential faculty involvement. This position provides the most direct opportunity for collaboration and leadership for faculty, teaching and learning, and is a key position in advancing the mission of the college. Faculty Council requests that faculty be fully included in administrative hiring committees and petition the procedures allow for faculty stakeholders to be part of the decision process. Our letter goes into more detail, but highlights of our concerns include the following. Firstly, there was no call out to faculty at large for participation in the search committees. And appointments were made by the administration exclusively. This is not counting the LCCA appointment. Faculty chosen were probationary and part-time faculty, which puts them at a disadvantage, and they are much less likely to have knowledge of college operations. The schedule for committee meetings excluded the participation of faculty members and key decisions were made outside of committee meetings, including the crafting of screening criteria, the actual screening of candidates, and the selection of finalists. On top of this, there were limited opportunities to raise concerns about the hiring process itself. At some point, replacement members representing the faculty were found, however, the appointment was again without faculty involvement. And after much of the work had been completed and no transfer areas were represented, for example. So in conclusion, the Faculty Council calls on the college to follow inclusive and meaningful processes that support all work groups and stakeholders. Hiring processes at the upper administration level should be above reproach, transparent, and inclusive. Until the college commits to this principle, to these principles, we will not have shared governance and we will continue to fall short at the leadership level. As such, we call for full faculty involvement in the current search process going forward and a review to ensure that proper procedures are in place in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board and President Bulger. I'm Kevin Steves. I'm the other partner in crime of Faculty Council co-chair with Paul Bunson. I am here as Faculty Council co-chair to read you a statement about instructional testing services as one of the four emails that we sent you this morning. Instructional Testing Services has been a part of the college for well over 10 years with many faculty and students benefiting from its services. Over 180 courses and we estimate hundreds of sections and thousands of students have benefited from the Instructional Testing Services in the three years prior to its closure due to COVID-19. The Instructional Testing Services, ITS, is imperative for student success because it supports academic integrity. Licensing and certification exams are required proctoring nursing, PTA, Microsoft Office, et cetera, provide support for maintaining high standards and using research-based practices and to maintain academic integrity. It helps the college meet legal requirements for articulation agreements with other institutions. It ensures the credibility and academic integrity of our programs by ensuring the student who is taking the exam is the one that's actually enrolled into the course. It also, ITS also supports equity, reduces student barriers and increases accessibility for students by providing a quiet testing space, reliable computers and internet, and allows for flexibility in students to be able to take exams more of their timeframe. It's an essential community service for our role as a community college. The lack of ITS creates opportunities for unequal treatment of students. It also imposes unequal effects of faculty trying to meet those students' needs. The Chromebooks we lend out to students don't work with the respond software, and they usually don't know that until they sign in to take the test. The ITS also supports the learning environment, supports pedagogy that calls for multiple attempts on formative assessments. An example is ungrading. Allows for faculty to focus on instructional time rather than taking instructional time for assessment. Supports pedagogy that identifies multiple low-stakes and high-stakes exams as best practices in assessing student mastery of learning objectives. ITS supports reducing anxiety around testing, believe it or not. Remote proctoring requires cameras that can be considered very invasive and infringe upon student privacy. Provides a quiet, reliable space for them to take an exam. Reports of students taking exams in their cars so they can get access to internet and have a quiet space, semi-quiet space to take those exams. It also designated a location that provides a quiet, secure, reliable location for testing, helping to avoid what is already a triggering situation for many students. So Faculty Council strongly supports the reopening of the ITS. It is vital for our student success and institutional credibility. We request that the ITS be reinstated and staffed to meet faculty and student needs ASAP or be once returned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Jefferson Goolspeak, followed by Jeffrey Barrowdale.
Hello, President Bulger and Board. Thank you for having us and allowing us to speak and share some of our thoughts. I teach in media arts, which is a department that does a lot of media content creation, and part of that is media literacy. And, and it was really interesting. Today I showed this proposal to my students and the response, without saying anything around it, they were so agitated by the ideas that were put forth in the policy. And I felt kind of proud of them that didn't have to coach or anything, that wow, you guys kind of get this, the delicacy of the, and the importance of the First Amendment and free speech. And so I want to talk about that a little bit, that aspect of the proposal. These are really challenging times as globally in all of our cultures as we, we struggle to deal with so many voices emerging and hearing so many things. And if we go back and look at the early 80s and we saw the deregulation of media pre-internet and how it consolidated within a year of a new FCC chair by the name of Fowler in 1981. Within a year, like 100 newspapers were owned by one person. And that's continued on and on. And so we reached this real critical mass of corporate control of the media and the messaging, which is always the goal. If there's a revolution in a country, tell my students, what's the first thing that happens? Well, they take over the messages. They take over the media and say, well, now we'll tell you what's happening. With the rise of the internet, we entered this phase of sort of disrupting the media system, as you all know, and we're still really struggling to deal with it. We can see that a lot of bad information gets out there. But I'll go with Ben Franklin in saying that you let it all come out and the truth will eventually rise to the top. Right now, it doesn't always feel like that. We, God, is this really going to get traction and people are going to pay attention to this? So it is difficult and we're in a really difficult period of time. And I feel as an institution of higher education, we can be setting sort of the high mark of we are going to allow difficult things to be said. We're going to allow it all to come out and then teach students how to navigate this confusing environment of information. And I think if we start closing it down on our own campus, then we're sending really the wrong message. And I think the direction it goes that this policy would go, it's not necessarily the step it takes, but it's the direction that that step points. And so I hope you'll consider like, is that really a direction we want to be pointing towards in making policy? Or is there maybe something else we want to do with this? And work together to navigate the difficulty of this period in our culture, because I think we'll get past it. I'm optimistic. Being with my students makes me optimistic. So I do think if we enable them and empower them and show them what we respect in terms of information, communication, letting all voices be heard, I really feel we'll be benefiting our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Barrowdale. I've taught philosophy here for over 20 years. And I've also been an advisor for a student club, Young Americans for Liberty. And I was also on the Free Speech Task Force chaired by Jessica Oliverado. Did a fantastic job and we, we spent a year, an academic year, having regular meetings every week, going over policies of free speech, looking at the law, looking at past policy, taking input from stakeholder groups, input from, from public meetings and forums, and came up with what I thought was an excellent policy with regard to outside groups coming into campus that would deal with this, this group that came in and disrupted campus and, and what was, I thought, a good balance of free speech rights and the educational needs of the college. And it was extremely disappointing for me to see all this work ignored and to see a new policy on the consent agenda that doesn't consult faculty, doesn't consult staff, doesn't bypasses the both unions and just seeks to pass a new policy governing not only outside groups, but also faculty and staff here at Lane. And so I would urge the Board to table this indefinitely, to, to respect our shared governance system, to, to connect with Faculty Council, with the, our two associations, the Faculty Association and the Classified Association, and to work together to, to see if we need to revise the policy and if so, how we should do it and to get input from all campus groups and to respect our collaborative and shared governance system here at Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's our last speaker for the evening, so I'm going to exercise my prerogative as Chair and address the subject that's been brought up by most of you this evening. At our work session in Florence in October, the Board discussed this time, place, and manner policy and agreed that it would table that policy. And so it has inadvertently been placed on tonight's consent agenda and the Board will not be acting on that policy tonight. The Board will, does intend to take more time to understand better what the ramifications of adopting a policy as recommended might be. I would like to thank all of you for being here tonight. I have found your testimony valuable and important. I listened to it carefully. And I hope you will consider coming to board meetings more often. I hope we don't only see you when you're unhappy about something that you think we're about to do. And I hope you have a little more faith and trust in us as time goes on. I'm a little, a little disappointed personally to think that, that many people have been led to believe that this Board was about to do something it clearly has had no intention to do. So with that, I wanted to put your minds at rest, give you the opportunity to leave and go home to your families if that's your choice. I'm sure some of you don't wish to remain for the duration of the board meeting, but thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it very much. Now we're going to move on to the President's report.
I'd like to begin by providing fall greetings to everyone. This last month really was a time of celebration and I'm going to begin with the celebration, which was the foundation fundraiser, which raised quite a lot of funds for, that are used for scholarships and used for other purposes that are for, on behalf of the institution. To continue with our celebration, in the last month, we had a groundbreaking of the Health Professions Building. And we also had an opening reception to celebrate Lane's new murals on campus. And there are a couple of kudos that I want to make sure that we give a recognition to. Lane Community College won seven medallion awards at the Annual National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. And this was really quite a highlight of the month. And that includes six gold and one bronze. So we really are celebrating that. And then the last involves students and under the leadership of a professor, Professor Tom Madison, a student developed graphic design magazine called The Bleed, won Best in Show at a national competition. And in this competition, there were Ivy League institutions and other institutions. So this was quite an accomplishment. And I just want to wrap up by saying that I encourage everyone to submit their ballots for this year as part of our civic responsibility. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President Bulger. That brings us to the consent agenda. Board members, be aware that we have, I have removed item M, which is Board Policy Update BP 3900. We will not be considering that this evening as part of the consent agenda. However, are there any other items on the consent agenda that any members of the Board would like to pull from discussion? For, yes, Lisa?
Yeah, I would like to pull the two policies on copyright and intellectual property.
And could you say the name, the numbers?
Absolutely. OCCABP 3715 and OCCA Board Policy 38, oops, sorry, OCCA Board Policy 3, where did it go? 3710.
3710?
Yes, so 3710, 3715.
So we will take those up individually. Okay, are there any others, Board members on Zoom, any policies or other items on the consent agenda you wish to pull from consideration as part of the consent agenda? There being none, is there a motion to approve what remains of the consent agenda minus Board Policies 3715, 3710, and 3900?
So move second.
Thank you, Austin. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mike Eister?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Steve Mattel?
Aye.
Rosie Pryor?
Aye.
Angela Van Cross?
No.
Was that a no?
Correct.
Okay, the motion carries. Six to one. So that brings us back to Board Policies 3715 and 3710. Lisa?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, Rosie, I want to appreciate you for acknowledging publicly a mistake that was made and that we removed that as was decided at the last meeting. I appreciated that. So similar to that policy, I feel like there's still, even though these two policies, we didn't say we didn't want to put on the consent agenda. We did move them to the consent agenda. I do feel like there's a lot more consideration that should happen prior to approval and I would simply ask my fellow Board members to not approve these this evening so that we could take a deeper look at them. I think there've been some concerns brought up. I think that moving forward, I would like to have a better understanding of what COPs agreements we have already existing in the college in relationship to policies that we are looking at. I think having known about some of the current COPs policies or COP, I don't, college operating procedures.
Online policies and procedures.
Online policies and procedures, thank you. Would have been really helpful with many of these policies that we looked at most recently. I asked some questions about the OERs or Open Educational Resources at the last meeting. And I have more concerns based on some information that I've reviewed recently. And so I would like us to take more time to take a look at these policies before we adopt them in consideration with some of the things that were discussed tonight in public comment, but also in terms of other agreements that we, we have.
Before I move on, would you like to make a motion to that effect, to table these policies?
Yes, if I may, I would like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Holly?
Yes.
Would you like to speak to your motion? Or do you feel like you just?
I feel like I did.
Mike?
I'd like to ask President Bulger, if there's a timing issue, is there a deadline by which these policies? a deadline by which these policies need to be addressed for any particular reason?
Thank you for the question, and there is no deadline.
Okay.
Any other comments from board members about the motion on the table? I believe we're ready for to have you call as well. Mike Eister?
Aye.
Lisa? Point of order, point of order. Uh, Steve had his hand up for a question, I believe.
Uh, I can't see Steve. There's no, there's no, nothing visible on the Zoom screen here.
Well, let's let him ask.
Well, nonetheless, Austin's right.
That's great. Go ahead, Steve, but we need to remedy that. I can't, I can't see you.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, Austin, for, I didn't realize you couldn't see me. Thank you, Austin. I just wanted to clarify with both of the policies as written, um, excuse me, I'm gonna cough unfortunately as I speak. My understanding is that the board was, in both cases, directing the president to, uh, develop procedures, and that our further understanding in both cases was that, that she would not be doing this in isolation. It would be done in full consultation with, uh, with the college council, with the, um, uh, you know, with, with a range of stakeholders across LCC. That was my understanding from the get-go, and it's clear that's what the faculty who spoke today were agitating for. And we certainly respect that and wouldn't expect anything different. But what seems to not have really been fully, um, explained or shared is that that's exactly the process that we accept, that we expect to happen next. This just simply authorizes that process to move forward.
Correct. That is my understanding as well.
Well, my question then to, to, uh, my fellow board members, Lisa and Holly, then is, you know, given that, that all that, what we're doing is moving forward a process that would actually engage with all the constituencies and evaluate the current, uh, policies and, uh, contract issues, et cetera, et cetera. Why wouldn't we, uh, move forward with this so that that process can take place?
Is there a board member who wants to respond? Uh, Angela, I see your hand. Did you want to respond to that question?
I, I feel like it was directed to me. May I respond?
I thought it was directed to all of us, Lisa, but feel free if you want to go ahead.
Um, so the reason that I would like more time to think about it is to have a better understanding of what the current policies under COPs are, procedures and policies. And I don't have an understanding of what that is right now, so I don't feel like I have adequate information. I, I do agree that, um, we would be, I, I mean, in our last meeting, it wasn't clarified that that would be the intent going forward, to use the governance system. And so I would actually like more information about what that practice would look like. And, um, so I don't feel like I have enough information to proceed with, um, moving forward this evening, and would like the time to have more information.
Angela?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of comments. Um, I voted no on the consent agenda, um, because I couldn't see the text of the policy, which I realized is because I was logged out of Board Docs. But that makes me wonder if, um, folks who don't have a privileged login like I do are able to see the full text of the, um, policies that were under consideration. So I hope that, um, if that is not the case now, that we work to get that sorted so the public can also have access to that information. Um, but that's neither here nor there. Um, regarding the copyright policy, I was actually also going to request to pull it. Uh, after the work session, um, I've been sort of sitting with it, and I'm still somewhat uncomfortable with it because of, I, I don't feel that it specifies the board's intention for what the president is directed to do. I feel that it specifies that the president should do something appropriate, but it doesn't specify what the board considers to be appropriate. And I think that it's important that while we always obviously assume good intent, our job is to specify, um, the policy for the, for the college, and I don't feel that this policy adequately does that. So I hope that we can rework it, um, if we do move it forward, then, then make it really clear, you know, there were questions raised at the work session about OERs. And I think we all have the great value placed on those resources. We understand the importance of those for students. Um, there are a variety of other issues raised this evening. I, I think it's just really important that we are very clear as a board what we consider to be appropriate, um, in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Holly's hand is risen.
Thank you, Lisa. May I, Rosie?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Actually, very well said, Angela, and I thought that if I, my recollection serves me correctly, that we, someone questioned even COPs, um, right? I thought it was Steve who wanted more clarification, and we were all in favor, I thought, of asking for more clarification of the process itself. So Angela well said. Um, I just think that we just need more clarification, um, overall. And so Steve, just to answer your question, that's why I second that motion. I just think we just need, we have further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
I'm gonna be apologizing for coughing every time I speak. I feel really awful about that. Uh, anyways, uh, well, I appreciate the discussion, and especially given that, um, that our president, Stephanie, said that there's really no urgency to move this thing forward. I'm gonna support the motion. I think the most important thing actually here is to try and, you know, bridge some of the trust gaps that we apparently have. Um, and I'll just really second what Rosie had said earlier, that it's, um, well, honestly, it's just a little bit, you know, upsetting and disappointing that, uh, y- you know, what I thought was fairly straightforward, but clearly isn't, um, that we were gonna direct our president to engage the college fully. Um, somehow, the, the lack of that being thoroughly specified, people are feeling, um, you know, concerned that they wouldn't be engaged, even though that's a longstanding practice. Um, so that's unfortunate, that, uh, that, uh, for whatever reason, it's out there, that some, that folks thought that we were just gonna bulldoze ahead. I wanted just to say, though, that I have every confidence in our, um, in our new president, that she fully intended to, and, and will, uh, once we finally get moving forward on this, to engage in all the ways and, uh, and develop a very thoughtful and thorough, um, policy. It may not, um, and I'm not talking about any one of these in particular, they may not, I should say this, right, satisfy everybody all the time, but that's, that the job is often to make hard calls. And I don't s- suggest at all that that's about what's, what's about to happen in, in, in the cases of these three that are currently, um, being contested by faculty. But, uh, in any case, I just, uh, but I'm just feeling a little bad and wanted to air that, uh, feeling that, uh, we seem to have a real trust issue here. And I would just encourage faculty in the future to reach out to board members and to, uh, the president and others, and ask what the intent was, um, because honestly, it felt like, uh, there was, um, uh, a lack of, of, um, of, uh, seeking some of those answers prior to the testimony given this evening. Stop there.
Thanks, Steve. Board members, if there are no further comments, I would like to move us forward. We have a full agenda this evening, and, um, I would like to ask, um, Celia to call the roll on the motions. Mike Eister?
Still, aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Steve Mattel?
Aye.
Rosie Pryor?
Aye.
Angela Van Cross?
Aye.
Thank you, board members. It was a good discussion. Um, that takes us to action items for this evening, the first being a building 12 advanced technology hub. President Bolger?
Yes, I'd like to ask Tom Goodhue to come to the podium and, um, address any questions you may have about, uh, 3A and also perhaps 3B, but we'll take them in turn.
Mm-hmm. So I'll start with 3A. This is, um, the start of the Building 12 Advanced Technology ITech Building. We're looking to start construction. So I think this is an exciting, you know, this is our third major construction project under the bond that we're looking to get under construction. Some background on this, this is, uh, um, we did a selection, an RFP selection process about a year ago. Uh, Lee Scrutcher Lewis has been working at, under a pre-construction contract of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, um, to help us get to a point where we can begin construction. This particular, specific piece is, um, what's often called an early work amendment. Um, we, we had one of those for the Health Professions Building as well, that got things started. This particular piece of early work amendment is one that is one and a half million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. So I think that's a, a big, yes, thank you, I, I, for seeing that. That is, this is dealing with, it was actually the fourth thing on my whiteboard, still on my whiteboard that staff brought to me when I started at the college here, of the compressed air system on this campus. There are these large compressed air systems, and they work, um, th- they're actually very critical to the campus operations and, and safety. They work our heating and cooling systems in this building and others. They help maintain our fire sprinkler systems, so very critical systems on that, that are run out of these central, um, plants. And then they also work tools in the art building and the mechanical departments, so they also do a lot of that work as well. But they are really critical life safety features for the campus. So I want to make sure that people understand that this isn't, um, something that we could go, oh, we could just buy electric drills instead of air-powered drills or whatever. It doesn't work that way. In the last week, we've had to service these existing compressors, because we found out one of them was shutting down and overheating. So it is a critical path item. Um, part of this is, we're, we're taking them out as a opening, um, we'll be tearing down the test cells, and they're currently located out there. They were located out there about 20 years ago, is my understanding. They're at the end of their life. We'll be locating them into what will remain in Building 12 as part of the central, um, utilities plant. So with that, I will.
Before I call on board members in order to facilitate discussion, can I ask for a motion from a board member with respect to this proposal?
That's why my hand is up.
Very good. Mike?
Um, I'd like to move the board approved Lee Scrutcher Lewis to be awarded a contract in the amount of one million nine hundred and eight, eight hundred and twenty thousand, uh, eight, nine and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for CMGC services related to the construction of Building 12 Advanced Technology Hub Project.
Board member Austin, seconds.
Thank you, thank you, Austin. Uh, Mike, do you want to speak to your motion?
Um, that, we've been planning to do these things that are gonna offset, uh, ongoing, uh, costs of maintaining our buildings, and this is one of those things that's gonna do that. We need to do it. Thank you.
Comments from other board members, questions? I'm scanning my Zoom colleagues. Uh, seeing none, I'm assuming my colleagues are ready to vote. Celia, will you call the roll? Mike Eister?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Steve Mattel?
Aye.
Rosie Pryor?
Aye.
Angela Van Cross?
Aye.
Okay, it takes us to item 3B. President Bolger?
Yes, and I will ask Tom Goodhue to take, um, item 3B. This is really exciting.
Yeah, this is an exciting project. Again, this is one that, um, was a, a, very much an important project for past President Hamilton, you know, that really was spearheaded this project to bring in the, um, this program and, and take better, you, help better utilize as well serve the community down in Cottage Grove. Uh, a lot of hard work that went into doing a lease a- as that, um, in part of that, we've had more or less a, a, and a gentleman's agreement, I'll, I'll call it, to say we would continue. And it is now time that the county is asking us to formalize that agreement. We, it is actually a pretty good deal. They're spending a lot of money to improve the building. Um, we're putting in four hundred thousand as a good faith effort. I often look at this as one, if you, if you're renting a space, it's a tenant finish allowance, essentially, that we gave them a few dollars to, to help them fix up the building during their time there. But they're really rebuilding that whole half of the building, along with re-roofing. Would have cost us a lot more, um, to do everything that, that's going on there, so.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion, Lisa?
Yes, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the bond fund contribution of four hundred thousand to Lane County for the South Lane Clinic being built at the LCC Cottage Grove Center.
Second.
Was that Austin?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa, do you want to speak to your motion?
Um, I, I don't feel the need to. I think this is a worthwhile investment and a fantastic project.
Other comments? Uh, Steve?
Uh, yeah, I'm supportive. Generally, I have just a question of, uh, of sequencing. So I, I understand that we're still awaiting word from the feds, I guess, on, uh, I think something like a million dollar grant that Lane County has, uh, resubmitted. I might have some of those details slightly off. Um, so my question for Tom is, is, uh, let's just say that that, uh, million dollars doesn't come through, does that, would that somehow cha- excuse me, change? Um, you know, how we would feel about contributing our four hundred thousand? And therefore, might it be smarter for us to wait until we have, uh, a firm word about the million dollar grant from the feds?
Um, this is, the, the way we've structured the deal is, we will not release our funds until they reach a point in construction where they get their first, some of their first building inspections approved, which basically says we hold on to the money, and if for some reason they pull out, we still had that four hundred thousand to put the building back, right? This is a very common terms in, uh, a lease. They ju- just for that reason, in case something, uh, the county came to us to ask, because, um, part of, i- it's a chicken and egg game with these federal funds. The federal funds want to know that all the other funds are, have a, a solid mark. So they've asked to say, if you provide it with this, um, they accept the stipulation that we would release the funds later. We're not first money in. Um, hopefully that answers the question.
Just a quick follow-up then, then the, uh, so the way that the motion is structured, that we would, um, show them that we are authorizing the funds, but that, uh, we wouldn't necessarily, um, spend them until it's clear about their contribution.
Don't know that the wording is quite that way, but if you'd like to modify it, that's probably okay?
I'm, I'm not sure if we are required to use the actual words that Lisa spoke or the recommended language contained in the board packet. The language in the board packet says, "Approve supporting the Lane County South Lane Clinic construction of a federally qualified health center in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars." That doesn't say spend it, it doesn't even say cut a check. It just says, um, "Approve supporting construction of a, of a federally qualified health center in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars." So I don't know, Steve, if that language sort of meets your test?
I don't, yeah, I don't feel like I have the, you know, the legal chops or whatever it is to, um, to ensure. I'm just raising a general, kind of high-level question. I'm hoping that staff can.
The guy, the guy with the chops is in the room, so we'll ask him.
Yeah, this is a, uh, really common situation with a federal grant. You know, they, they want to make sure that all the other money is, is in place before they put their money in place. And my understanding of the waterfall of the funds is that our money comes in towards the end. Uh, so, you know, if the, if the Fed money is not there, uh, our money doesn't necessarily go in. So we would still have that four hundred thousand, and that could potentially, if the county couldn't find replacement funds and pulled out of the project, could, as Tom said, sort of put the building back together for us. But again, really a, a common way of, for the feds to do their grant funding. All right, thank you.
Uh, Angela?
Thank you. And I was perusing Board Doc, of course, and I, um, uh, I'm fully supportive of this motion. I hope that we could, um, the, the responses to my questions that were sent out in writing and added to Board Doc and available.
Thank you. I think we should too. A- any other comments or questions from board members? I believe we're ready to vote. Celia, will you call the roll, please? Mike Eister?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Steve Mattel?
Steve Mattel.
Aye.
Rosie Pryor.
Aye.
Angela Van Kraus.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. It's going to be great to have that clinic in Cottage Grove. Brings us to discussion items. President Bolger?
Yes, we're pleased this evening to present to you information on the international program. I'd like to invite Dawn Whiting, who's the acting senior AVP for Student Affairs and her team to make this presentation to you this evening. Dawn?
Good evening, members of the board and President Bolger. We're very excited to present some information this evening about our international programs. I'm going to quickly step out of the way and put the spotlight on the team who's been working on this on, under the exceptional leadership of Mandy Pritchard, who has been working with our international programs for quite some time now. She has her team with her on a presentation, as well as I think some folks from abroad will be joining us this evening. So with that, I'm going to hand it over. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Pryor, President Bolger, and members of the board. My name's Mandy Pritchard and I am here tonight to talk a little bit about our international programs. Many of the world's rich and diverse cultures have been brought to Lane Community College through the international programs. Tonight, our team will focus on three specific institutional contributions. They include institutional culture, enrollment, and fiscal stability. As well, I'd also like us to recognize this evening and celebrate our international students' contributions to our campus community. Rather than spend the evening talking about the students, I've invited three student leaders that will also be presenting this evening. Those members include Hina Tamutu, Donal Kuwaliso, and Sarah Baptista. You'll also have an opportunity here to hear from Carla Anderson, who is our International Programs Associate Director, and our brand new International Programs Director, Will Feliz. If you could advance the slide, please? One more? And again. So one of the things I wanted to share with you tonight is aspects of our institutional culture and that our program supports our college's vision, mission, and values. But most specifically, our value of diversity in that it develops the capacity to understand issues, differences, power, and privilege. One of the things that our students bring to our campus is educating our campus community. The National Institute of Health defines cultural humility as a lifelong process of self-reflection, self-critique whereby the individual not only learns about another's culture, but also starts with the examination of his or hers own beliefs and cultural identities as well. So I'd like to invite Hina up to the podium to speak with you.
Thank you, Mandy. Good evening, the Board of Education and President Bolger. My name is Hinata Mura and I am an international student from Japan. And I am working with the international program as one of the residential peer mentors, peer mentors at Lane Housing Titan Court, and I am also a senator at the Student Government Association. Other international students are required to live in Titan Court for their first term at the minimum. And we currently have seven international peer mentors living at Titan Court. It is a fantastic opportunity for not new international students to build a community as well as a supporting system in a foreign country. Furthermore, having residential peer mentors would make it accessible for new international students to reach out to peer mentors. Some concerns might arise spontaneously and it is wonderful system to have residential peer mentors for emergencies. Thank you for your cooperation.
So good evening, Board of Education member and President Bolger. Good evening to the awesome public as well. So my name is Donal Kuwaliso. I'm an international student from the Congo and I'm also one of the leader of the international peer mentor team. I'm really glad to be here and honored. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So first off, before starting my report, I would like to thank the Student Government Association for their clothing stash. I didn't have any suits or formal clothes for tonight, but they gave me this.
You look terrific.
So thank you. Thank you so much. I know the vice president is here and Hina is also here. So thank you. I really appreciate you. So tonight I'm going to give a report about the events that the international program have been hosting for international students. Especially for this fall term, we got about seventy-four, I guess, international students. Mandy, please correct me if I'm wrong. And one of the goal in organizing this, those events is not only to allow students to have fun or rest, but to also engage and connect with each other. We would also like to bridge the gap between residential students and international students. And we would also like to promote the different resources we have here on campus. So since the beginning of the fall, we've been doing great events. We've initiated this concept in which each of the peer mentors has to lead one of the events. And the reason why we do this is because we want our peer mentors to be able to increase their leadership skills as well as teamwork. And we also want them to be seen as role models to our students. So the fun things. So one of the events that you've been doing, we did a river road trail. So with the students, we borrowed the bikes at the Lane Bike Service and we went to bike over the Rose Garden. That was really awesome. A lot of students really enjoyed the event. Another thing we did, we went pumpkin patching at the Johnson Farmer. We borrowed the Lane van and we went over there. It was great because for most of the students, including myself, it was my first time doing it ever since I'm in the U.S. And I've been here for three years, so it was really awesome. And another thing that we'll be doing, we do this, the Titan Nights, I won't say a month. So last Thursday, we had our Halloween party. It was great. A hundred and three student register and eighty-two of them attended the event. So it was really awesome. And another thing we did, we do back bi-weekly coffee talks right over the center building. And we have done three of them so far and we got about a hundred students coming. So those are the updates I have. It's really awesome to see that students are getting engaged again more and more, especially since the pandemic. It's really nice to see that students are coming back and are really engaging, just enjoying the college and just get connected. So we value your inputs and that's why we wanted to give you this, those updates. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah and I am one of the administrative assistant for retention. And I work with the awesome peer mentor team. So our peer mentor, everyone went through a very intensive training during a week. So, and the things that we approached, we covered on the training was mainly confident resolution, intercultural communication, self-care, team, team building, and much more. That was a crucial time for our international leaders because that helped them create the team building and start connecting much deeper. And this leadership hall has an outstanding influence in our peer mentors. They reported that with this position, they are much more responsible, much more confident, and much more ready for the actual employment after school. So that was very exciting to hear from them. Thank you so much for your time and appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
If you could advance the slide, we're going to move into enrollments. And one more, we've got Carla Anderson joining us via Zoom. To open up this section, five years ago, the international programs was given the directive to focus on African countries with our recruitment efforts. In our 2022 review, we've seen these efforts come to fruition with the identification of a number of African countries that now are identified on our list of key markets as well too. So I'm going to hand this portion over to Carla.
Good evening, President Bolger, Chair Pryor, and distinguished board members, college leadership, and audience. It is a pleasure and a joy to highlight our international program at your meeting tonight. Attracting international students to come to Lane is highly relational. We have successfully established a hundred and sixty-seven global agency partners who represent Lane around the world. And two of the students you just heard from came directly through those agency partnerships. We also have excellent global branding with over twelve hundred non-agent partners. This includes high school counselors abroad, principals, U.S. Embassy staff, Education USA professionals, vendors, parents, and alumni. This network significantly impacts our recruitment activities. And one of the students you just heard from came directly through Education USA that is based at an embassy in Africa. During the pandemic, our recruitment work continued virtually with over three hundred international webinars, strong global social media presence, and of course, our partners who continued to promote Lane. We have now been able to start in-person recruitment again, and this was kicked off in June of this year with a joint trip with the University of Oregon, where we gave joint presentations hosted by three U.S. Embassies in Southeast Asia. We were the first to hold in-person student events post-pandemic. This created a lot of buzz and excitement. This close collaboration with our counterparts at the University of Oregon highlights for students and their parents an excellent educational path that is more affordable and accessible. We refer to this as the two plus two plan. Diversity is an underlying principle that we promote in our work with the ideal of having students from many different countries and a guideline of one country having not more than twenty percent of the total of the population of international students. We do not limit admissions, but instead we manage this twenty percent guideline with targeted recruitment from diverse markets. Diversity creates a much stronger program and greatly benefits all students and staff at Lane. As Mandy already mentioned, our recruitment efforts on the continent of Africa have been fruitful and have expanded, especially in West Africa, Togo, Benin, and Ivory Coast, as well as Democratic Republic of Congo and South Africa. As you know, our current and our past student government presidents are from Africa. And that is so thrilling. Also of note with Africa is our MOU partnership developed in collaboration with Michael Blade. Is an MOU between the government of Togo in West Africa, our American Embassy in Togo, and Lane Community College. Two years ago, we welcomed two students who are nearly one hundred percent funded by the government of Togo and the U.S. Embassy in Togo. Those two students are on track to graduate this coming June. Also of note, we have MOU partnerships in other places. In Costa Rica, we have a partnership with CRUSA, a private organization that partners with our American Embassy in Costa Rica. And we have received one fully funded student through this on the scholarship program. We also have numerous school partnerships in Japan, Kazakhstan, Malaysia, Democratic Republic of Congo, and more. Our social media presence extends our global reach with nine international social media channels that have over twenty-nine thousand followers globally. A special note is our social media presence in Vietnam, where Facebook is the number one platform. And our Lane International Vietnam Facebook page has over twenty-two thousand followers and it's growing. We remain excited about inviting and welcoming international students to Lane. Thank you.
You could advance the slide, please? Fiscal stability, one more. Since 2016, our international programs has contributed over twenty-six million dollars to the institution by contributing to the general fund. As a Fund Nine program, international programs funds a full breadth of positions at Lane that includes classified faculty, management, and students. Our international programs has and continues to be a significant revenue source for the institution. I'm going to hand the last portion of this presentation over to Will, our new director.
Thank you, Mandy. Good evening, President Bolger and Chair Pritchard and Chair Board Members. It is a pleasure to speak to you and address you today. It's my first board meeting with you. I wanted to take an opportunity to also talk to you a little bit about our projections towards the future and how we continue to look at our revenue with new opportunities. My, one of the first things that I, I think I heard from the moment I arrived to the college was that there was a desire for us as an institution to continue to look at new opportunities of growth in our Hispanic population-serving role. And I believe that in our international population, we have a great opportunity as well to continue to align our strategic plans and our strategic goals to continue to reach our Latin markets and our Latino population in international as well. And one of the things that I think Lane has done over the years incredibly has been to be able to utilize its resources nimbly in order to address our markets. And I think one of the things that we are excited about is that with my heritage as a Latino, that we will be able to continue to focus some of our efforts in our Latino population and some of our Latino markets where we know we could have a great attraction. Great work has already been done on this and we will continue to expand on that work as we continue to look at the upcoming years. I believe that there is, of course, with COVID have come many challenges for many of our embassies and for our student populations. We've seen a large increase of visa appointments delays. And as we continue to look at our strategies, we're continuing to focus specifically on countries where there are shorter timelines, where we're looking at students who are getting higher visa rates. So we are continuing to follow the trends, follow the challenges that we're seeing in the market and responding nimbly to those challenges, which is something that I believe is very exciting about our international team and about our college as a whole. Another thing that I think we are continuing to look to leverage as a new opportunity for us is also my role as a chair for the state consortia. The state consortia's mission is to continue to expand Oregon as a study destination for international students. In conjunction with the work that we do with the Commercial Services, the Department of Commerce of the United States, as well as many of the institutions who are members of the consortia here in the state of Oregon. We continue to look at how we put our resources and leverage our connections to continue to increase this idea of street, international students coming to the state. And of course, specifically for us, how we continue to encourage those international students to attend Lane specifically. We have been able to leverage many partnerships, like partnerships with the University of Oregon and many others, to continue to increase our attraction and our distinctive as an institution. Another thing that I think we are continuing to work really well and that we will continue to expand is on our effort to continue to highlight our distinctives as a college. How we continue to set ourselves apart over other community colleges, both in the state as well as in the rest of the country. A big thing that sets us apart, for example, is this idea of our housing. How we continue to provide housing for international students, which is a huge piece for us because it's allowing international students and parents of international students to continue to rest assured that when their students are coming to us, they're also going to be having a safe place to live with us as well. Something that I, as being an external person to the college when I first arrived, I was able to observe because I was, I'm coming from a different institution within the state, was the fact that indeed Lane has an amazing reputation, both for how we serve our students as well as for our nimbleness to respond to challenges that arise. And certainly, we have seen many challenges with COVID. And as we've seen all these different challenges with our financial crises in the state, we've been able to respond promptly to our international student markets and our student populations in order to address the needs of our population, of our international students specifically. So we are very excited to continue to look at to continue to increase our interest and our attraction for international students attending Lane Community College. to continue to increase our interest and our attraction for international students attending Lain Community College. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, great presentation. I'm sure many members of the board want to comment. I have Mike and then Austin.
So my first professional job some fifty years ago was as a head resident in a residential international house at the University of Nebraska. It was a wonderful job, and I'm so inspired to see that international education is alive and well and thriving here at LCC. It's, it's different than anything else a college does, and it's vitally important to the college. So thank you for your work. Thank you, students, for what you're doing.
Austin.
Thank you so much. First off, thank you to the students that spoke. Our community is richer because you've come to our community college, so I want to thank you for coming tonight. I'm also really excited to hear about a focus on Latin American countries because obviously, we have a HSI goal as an institution and so forth. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit on what are the goals to, as far as numerical goals with Latin American countries? Second question, if I may also, during orientations and education of student services for international students, are they made aware of the Student Health Center and health services available to them?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer that last one. We actually switched our health insurance to Luremark. It offers a component for our, our international students and their parents as far as telehealth. And that was really important for our program to also be able to fill in the gaps in the evening hours, weekends, and holidays when our services aren't available on campus. And so they have a full session on that, Austin, where they're actually going through every piece of that, that area for insurance purposes. And then we've also included our mental health and wellness and our health center colleagues in that conversation and information so they can add that added layer of support when they're serving our international students as well, too.
I'm really glad to hear that. Thank you.
And your first question?
And the first question is, as far as the goals, I would really like to have an opportunity for us to sit with President Bolger to look at what those goals will look like for the institution as she leads us in that direction.
Good answer. Good answer. Are there other comments or questions from board members? Steve?
Yeah, if the, I also really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you so much. It's really, I love the fact that we are, you know, learning more about the institution all the way around, from the international programs this month to some of the things we learned about in the past few months, and I hope to hear so much more about, you know, some of the things that make the place so special. So thank you for the effort to the students and staff who brought the presentation to us. If, I can't tell if the students are still in the room. I hope they are. If they are, I'm wondering if they'd quickly come back to the podium. I would just love to hear very briefly, you know, how you heard about Lain. We heard about the outreach that Lain is doing. I'm curious how you heard about Lain and what made you decide to attend.
Thank you for the question. And I, as I mentioned, I am from Japan, and I use one of the agency that has a partnership with Lain. And then the way I found Lain was pretty interesting and funny. And then one of my friends from school went, came to Oregon as a school program. And then I was kind of familiar with the name Oregon, and I had no idea which state have in here. And then I just quickly searched Oregon Community College, and then rain pops up in the top. And then I saw Lain has a really nice housing, and I'm like, okay, I'm going there. And that's like kind of the reason I chose to come to Lain, but I don't regret anything. I am so glad to be here.
Cool.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the question. As I mentioned, I'm from Congo, and I think Carla mentioned the same thing in her presentation. I heard about Lain with a agen- agency called Access Education. So when they came to my high school and they started interesting students to come to the U.S., not Lain, but the U.S., and then I was like, okay, yeah, I'm interested. I talked to my parents. They were okay, too. And then the man that helped me to do all the process told me, you're going to Eugene, Oregon. I was like, Eugene, Oregon? I have never heard of that. Where is he? Where is he on the map? Like, even when I tell my friend, oh, I'm in Eugene, Oregon. They're like, Eugene, Oregon? Where is he? But like, yeah, I came here. I eventually like this, the city. It's a great city for studying. I was even supposed to transfer to go to OSU, but I think I'm gonna still be here for a couple of months. I'm not ready to leave, you guys. So yeah, so that's basically how I heard about Lain. Thank you.
Hello, I'm back. So I didn't say where I'm from, but I am from Cape Verde Islands. It's like ten islands in the Atlantic Ocean, in the northwest of Africa. And I, I, first of all, my intention was to, to study in California. However, I didn't have enough topo score to get in that college. My English needed to still be improved. So my, one of the academic advisors, the, the same company, the same service that Carla worked with, she recommended me Lain because Lain had the ESL program where I could, I could improve my English and also start my classes in a way that is not like drastically crazy for me. So that's why I chose Lain. And later on, I was planning to start in Oregon because Oregon is close to California and then finish up and then transfer to California. But I end up in love with Oregon, so I'm going to transfer to OSU.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thanks. Austin?
Yeah, I have another question unless another board member. Any other question? Okay, cool. Could you, could you go more into detail about the visa interview support services that we offer to students? And additionally, I know, I see that business, business education, and there's a few other different programs that are kind of highly sought after by international students. But I've read reports about how there's not only a shortage here for healthcare workers, but also there's an international shortage of healthcare workers. And I was wondering, are we starting to see a change in healthcare education needs from international students and communities?
Thank you for asking. I'm actually going to defer to Carla on the visa support and see if she's hearing thoughts as far as the healthcare aspect.
Yes, thank you for that question, Austin, and the wonderful dialogue from all of the board members and students. Regarding the visa interview support, so of course, applying to a college or university is just the first step in being allowed to enter the United States. And after being admitted and receiving the documentation that shows you're admitted, all international students must make an in-person appointment at an embassy or consulate in their home country. And in many countries around the world, that actually can be a hurdle. And that is completely separate from colleges and universities. In fact, there is a very strong wall between us and the consular department at embassies. We are able to meet with them from time to time, but it's for very, very general conversations. They are not able to discuss any details or any specific cases. But there are three general categories that we know that international students are assessed. One is, are they a valid student, and are they using the student visa to come to the United States and actually study, and they're not just using it to, to try to get to the United States. It is a non-immigrant visa, not an immigrant visa. And, and second area that they are assessed on is their financial ability to, to cover their costs. And the third general category is return to home country. So they do have to prove they're a valid student. They can afford to come and that they will depart the United States when their studies are complete. So we do send them information post-admission about these general categories and a list of tips about how to approach the visa interview. And we also provide virtual advising for the visa interview. I just did one yesterday with a student in Africa as he's preparing for his visa interview on November nine. So we do a lot of virtual advising, sometimes in person. When I was in Vietnam in June with University of Oregon, I was able to have coffee with a student who was applying to come for a fall term. So I did hers in person, and she got her visa, so we were very excited about that. So it's a kind of a multi-pronged approach, and we, we try to help the students understand as much as possible. We never know what questions they will be asked. And oftentimes, visa interviews can be two to three minutes long. So it's very fast, very quick, and consular offices are doing hundreds a day. So it's, it's a real fast process, and it can be a significant hurdle sometimes. And as Will alluded to, during the pandemic, many embassies were closed. And now they're experiencing extreme backlogs as more and more students are trying to get those visa interview appointments. So, so we, we have continued work to do in this area. And I will defer to Will on the, I believe you were asking about academic programs like business and maybe healthcare. Will and/or Mandy?
Yeah, I'll be happy to answer that. Thank you for the question, Austin. Yes, we, of course, over the years, have always seen a very high interest in international students for healthcare professions. However, some of the biggest challenges that we run into, it's not just a Lain-specific challenge. It's a, it's a whole country challenge. For example, in the case of medical education, international students coming to study can start at Lain or can start directly at a four-year institution. Unfortunately, there's still about a one percent of international students that would receive a seat for a medical, seat for a, for a medical program once they complete their bachelor's degree. There are a couple of institutions that are well-known for receiving international students, but the number of seats and the number of interests don't, don't quite compare to each other. And so unfortunately, we continue to see this struggle of finding seats for international students in healthcare programs. Not only that, many of the, of the students historically, and this is more anecdotal, more of the students who are coming with an interest in healthcare professions often desire not to return back home to their country, but to actually engage in the healthcare professions here within the United States. And while we may be one hundred percent interested in helping fill some of those needs in our country, then that goes back into the, into one of the areas that Carla was addressing with the visa approach is that those students need to have demonstrated goals to return back to their countries. And so often, we see higher denial rates for students who are applying into, into some of those health professions when they can demonstrate, but they have strong ties to their country. And of course, business is longstanding, being a huge program for international students, probably one of the most popular programs. International students seek to study in the United States at all levels, both at the associate's level, undergraduate, for a bachelor's degree, as well as for master's degrees and postgraduate programs.
Got it. Is there a, may I do a follow-up question about the healthcare one? Is there a, is there a visa that allows them to then be able to work in the United States, study, but then receive employment within the United States? What's that visa?
So, so yes, there is multiple visas, and there's multiple approaches for that. So if a student is coming to study at Lain, another distinctive of, of being a community college is that an international student can come to Lain, graduate, apply for something that's called optional practical training, which allows the student to work one year legally within the United States after completing an associate's degree. Then they can transfer onto a bachelor's degree program. And then they are eligible once again to apply for that, for another year of optional practical training. If they're going into some of the STEM fields, they have a little bit longer opportunity if they're approved for those that allow the students to work. Once they've completed this process, a student can apply for what is called an H visa. And that is a very, very difficult visa to get because it has to be sponsored by the organization that, that, that that new student graduate is going to be working at. And so it's very costly, and many institutions or organizations don't really want to be involved in that process because they can invest the money, and the student can still be denied the visa, and then they're out of the effort. And so we tend to see that be a little bit less of interest.
Got it. Thank you. That was really informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank all of you for your presentation this evening. And not, don't want to keep you too much longer from your studies. But I would like to compliment you on the format of your presentation tonight. I particularly appreciated the fact that you tied your presentation to the board's adopted strategic plan. I really, really appreciated that. And I hope perhaps other colleagues in the organization, when it's their turn in the barrel to, to present to the board, will, will give some consideration to tying the information that's brought forward to the board to the strategic goals that we've set for the organization. So thank you very much for doing that and for illustrating to us that we can work on those goals. So thank you.
Thank you for your time and service.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, we're moving on to a PERS update. President Bolger?
Yes, well, that was fun, and this will be another fun presentation. You've asked for an, an annual update, really, of the PERS bond and program, and so that is what Dr. Stallard will do.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Bolger, I have one, one request for the future. Anytime I have to present, don't let me go behind students because my presentation is not going to be as exciting as those students. So job, job well done. But this evening, I'm gonna give you a brief update on the bonds. So next slide, please. Back in April of this, my first board meeting at the boardwork session, the board discussed what are we going to do to address our, our pension liability? So there was a lot of discussion on, on the, at the May board meeting. The board approved a resolution six-six-nine authorizing staff to look at addressing the pension liability for the college. Next slide, please. Okay, and on May eighteenth, with the help of Carol, Carol Samuel and Brandon and Greg, Capital One Bank came to us to express interest in buying our entire pension bond at a rate of four point five, which was well below the board-approved rate of four point five one. And on July sixth of this year, I was happy to report that Capital One Bank and Lain signed an agreement, or I signed the agreement on behalf of the college. And at the rate, the final rate for the signature was four point two. Next slide, please. I, I guess you can't read this thing, but this year, twenty-twenty-three, we are going to receive a savings of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The following year, twenty-twenty-four, our savings is going to be six, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So I believe that the investment we make in selling the bonds to Capital One at a rate of four point four two, in my opinion, was the right investment for the college. Next slide, please. I received an email, I want to say last Friday, from the HEK, letting me know that the HEK has sent our first payment to the Bank of Wells Fargo and, and US Bank. Next slide, please. The, the first payment total was three point five million, million dollars. And as I mentioned earlier, the savings was four hundred and eleven thousand, thousand dollars. This year, next year, it will jump to six hundred thousand. And the, the next slide, I will entertain any questions.
Board members, questions for Dr. Stallard?
Well, since there's no question, it's always a pleasure to come before the, come before the board, not access. Oh, oh. All right, Steve, I was just making sure, and since I'm not wearing my glasses, I apologize.
So I wasn't watching, and I didn't know who, who came up first, so we'll do it alphabetically. Austin?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think Steve was up first, but that's okay. My question is that, obviously, so this is an annual savings, and then there's going to be a, an averaging of the savings over the years. Is that how this process goes as we continue on?
Every year, our savings is going, is going to increase based on, on the credit and, and the rate. based on on the credit and and the rate. So that's why you see every year, next year goes to six hundred thousand and I forget what twenty twenty-five is going to hold for us.
Got it. But essentially, it's an increase in savings over time.
Yes, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Steve?
George, I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate our ongoing humor about this situation. So uh uh, because you'll probably get questions from me for a long time to come. Nonetheless, I definitely appreciate the the back and forth. So the presentation was um seemed to focus mostly on one side of the the arrangement, right? We also had to put that eighty million dollars into um, the 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 market, right? So uh, I I guess this is a piece I'm not quite understanding is don't are how how am I trying to say this? We owe eighty million dollars at some point. We borrowed it. We have to pay it back. And we're, the plan is to pay it back um uh with uh money earned in the market. So are you going to be reporting to us how that investment is doing?
Well, I didn't, I didn't review this, the side account for this presentation. But at my next update on a quarterly basis, I will, I will review the side account. Remember, every every quarter, we have, we have a side account that generate, generates some money for us that we really do not touch. So at my next quarterly update, I will get with Carol and we will we will dive into the side accounts and I will give you, give you a report. But every year, around, I want to say this is November, around October, we will be making our payment. Remember, we have no control over the payment. Heck, we'll send the check directly, directly to the bank. We we are not really, really involved in it. I will get a report saying that HECC has made the payment and the check went to to US Bank and Wells Fargo. But the next time I would, I will spend some time and discuss the side account. Where where on some money for us also. But I just wanted to make sure we give an update on exactly how the bonds, the bonds was doing on the savings.
Well, I appreciate that, but I I think there's, I guess the way I think of it, there's risk and reward. And tonight, I think you mostly discussed, you know, the rewards, what we can expect in the near term as a result of this um decision. But we've also exposed ourselves to uh, you know, potentially significant risks. So that's the piece I'm hoping to also be updated on on a regular basis.
No, no problem. I will get with Carol Samuel and Brandon and we will, we will focus, focus on the risk.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. Austin, did you have another question?
Yeah, no. Well, I more or less just like a comment, I guess. Like, so like the stock market and the returns from the stock market to make the payments is in the long term. It's not necessarily based off of the quarterly. Um, so it's essentially, it's the long-term investment and the earnings from that long-term investment. So yes, I I understand Steve's concerns, absolutely, in regards to the stock market. But um, I mean, the the basis of this is in the long-term investment of the stock market, not the quarterly uh investment uh uh proceeds uh in the stock market. So um, you know, it's so it's almost like, you know, when you have your Robinhood account and you look at the stock market minute by minute, you're just going to create a lot of stress for yourself and uh and uh, you know, when as opposed to just letting it sit there for several years and so forth. So, yeah. So anyway, yes, we've taken on risk, obviously, with this uh process. But um, I don't necessarily see the value in the quarterly update of the stock market because it is based off of the long-term um um, income of the investment. Is that correct, Dr. Stallard?
That's correct. But remember, the reason why I said I will come back to the board on a quarterly basis, I thought that was a requirement from the board initially when the board approved us selling the capital, capital um, capital bank for for our stocks. So I was just complying with the board request to come back on a quarterly basis and provide an update.
I understand.
Yeah.
Anything further, Austin? Okay, uh, any other questions or comments from members of the board? Thank you for this update. And I know you will time your reports to us in an efficient manner. Looking forward to it. Um, that brings us to uh, some reports. Um, do we have a representative from our student government to make a report tonight? Very cool. Welcome. Will you introduce yourself?
Hello, I am Amaya Kekaburu. I'm the Vice President of the Lane Student Government Association. So
You can pull that mic down.
Oh, yeah, there we go. We're good. There we go. Uh, good evening, Board of Education and President Bulger. I'm speaking on behalf of our president, Nakar Ramakun, who sends his apologies for being unable to attend today's meeting in person. He is attending over Zoom though. On behalf of the FGA, we have prepared a report outlining the work we have completed during October twenty twenty-two. Beginning with what was discussed in our last report, we set out to recruit three new senators to the SGA before the end of October. Nakar Nakar and I are proud to announce that we have appointed five new senators into the SGA who were inducted this morning in our public senate meeting. Our new senators are Ilhan Hanif, Mary Anne Musango Monyang, Diyoto Susumo, Sawyer Smith, and Owen Robles. We boast an incredibly diverse student government that consists of nine officials across six different countries. We have assigned each of them to one of our six staff positions. Sawyer Smith is our president pro tempore. Owen Robles is our treasury officer. Ilhan Hanif is our communications officer. Diyoto Susumo is our events officer. Hina Tamora is our social media officer. And Mary Anne Musango Monyang is our inclusivity officer. Our officials will also be representing ASLCC in various governing councils. Nakar is part of the college council. I am part of the faculty council. Hina Tamora and Diyoto Susumo have joined the diversity council. Ilhan Hanif has joined the infrastructure council. Owen Robles and Sawyer Smith have joined the student activity fee committee and Musango has joined the student success council. We are looking forward to working with these various councils and committees in the future. Outside of the senate recruitment process, we also hosted a Halloween party in Hogland Commons on Monday. We provided pizza, cookies, and candy and allowed interested students to join a drawing. The winner of the drawing was awarded a second generation pair of AirPods. Over the course of the day, we engaged with over fifty students. We are planning on hosting similar events to help boost student engagement on campus in the future. On the topic of student engagement, we are continuing to explore ways we can replicate the functions of Titan Communities, which was our past engagement platform. Using our current resources such as Moodle, MyLAN, and Google Suite, we have successfully replicated the weekly newsletter, which was originally sent out through Titan Communities on Moodle. The newsletter is essential because it alerts students of upcoming events, opportunities, and resources on campus. We also continue our work with Community Advocacy and Resource Education, CARE, an institutional resource to perform a survey that will assess the rates of food insecurity among Lane Community College students. The findings from the survey will help guide the actions we take in the future to address the food insecurity needs of our students. The survey, the survey is close to being finalized. We have also met with a with and formed a relationship with Oregon Student Association, also known as OSA. Nakar and I met with the interim director, Joseph Cruz, to get a general introduction into the role of OSA. OSA have established themselves as a crucial partner uh to our advocacy work. Nakar and I have also met with the president and vice president, Luda and Kavi respectively, of the Associated Students of University of Oregon, ASUO. We are excited by the prospect of combining student governments to represent students across Eugene and Oregon. Currently, we are working with OSA and ASO, ASOU on the recruitment of Eugene Campus Organizer. Finally, we are working with OSA on a voter education ca- campaign. We are participating in class wraps and clipboarding to remind students of the November eighth voting deadline and of the importance of voting. We will continue to work on this campaign until the day of the election, November eighth. The future of the SGA is looking promising and we are excited about the work to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
Uh, I've had the opportunity to work with student governments for a very long time in a number of different settings and I I know that some years it clicks and works and some years it's really hard to get going and I'm just incredibly impressed with uh the jumpstart that this student government has gotten on the year. It's quite impressive and I want to encourage you to keep keep going full bore and don't forget your studies.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the report. Thank you. Um, and a report from LCC EF. Frankie?
Now, my name is Frankie Coconore. I'm the president of LCC EF. And my pronouns are her and hers, or she and hers. Um, I'd like to start acknowledging what happened to Paul Pelosi on Friday of last week. No one should ever have to wake up to a home invasion where someone has the intent of harming another person due to politics. I want to say that. And my heart and the heart of the whole executive council of LCC EF goes out to Paul Pelosi, Nancy Pelosi, Nancy Pelosi and their family. It's truly a tragedy. Um, in October, LCC EF and the college signed an MOA for the Oregon Paid Leave um Act. And we would like to thank the board of approving to pick up the employee contribution. And also thank the administration. Um, recently, administration has asked LCC EF if we would sign an MOA for the college to temporarily outsource some of our custodial work. That department is heavily shorthanded and it's a serious issue over there and they've not been able to fill the positions if they have posted. This, there's a reason that we can't fill those positions. The starting wage is thirteen sixty-four an hour. And that's fourteen cents higher than minimum wage right now. There are so many jobs in our community that start their employees at a minimum of fourteen dollars an hour. And uh then we found out this week that Four J School District, Four J School District, they are now going to have their lowest wage across the board, the eighteen dollars an hour. And so with this happening in our community, I cannot see how temporarily outsourcing will fix this issue. If we bump the wage up to fourteen dollars an hour, Four J is still at eighteen dollars an hour minimum for all positions. So who will apply here? This last summer, the reason why they had one groundkeeper was, that was the manager for the for that department doing all of the work is because people in our community actually have to pay a higher wa- have to get a higher wage to be able to afford to pay rent and utilities. And this is, this will be going on where they receive a wage that covered, this will be going where they receive a wage that covers the basic cost of living in Lane County. So the situation we are willing, so on this situation, we're willing to work with the college, but it has to be a solution that makes sense to us with wages. And then I want to also thank everybody for moving the time, place, and manner restriction policy. This community and the campus has been a center for our rights and freedoms of expression and speech in this in our area. It feels good to know that the board isn't acting in a way that many communities in our country are by limiting our freedoms and that our country has been proud to uphold. Thank you very much. And also, thank you for bearing with me. I've had a headache for a couple days, so I'm I think I'm at my limit pretty much for now.
Thank you. Adrian?
Good evening, President Bulger and members of the Board of Education. Um, I have a few updates um and would like to also speak briefly on the board policies. Um, on behalf of the faculty, I would like to express appreciation for you Chair Prior for your clarification regarding the board's intent about the speech policy. Thank you for allowing us time to speak and hearing our voices. We look forward to collaborating to ensure that faculty intellectual property rights continue to be protected and that OERs are encouraged, supported, and freely shared to support students. One issue that I would like to underscore is that our internal shared governance system is entirely disconnected from board policies. The policies that are implemented through the shared governance system are not presented to the board or vice versa. This disconnect is problematic because the OCCA policies overlap with existing college policies and in some cases, um, existing contracts already passed through the governance system. A more typical governance system would pass policies up from the internal governance system to the board for consideration. Um, a few campus updates. You heard tonight um some uh concerns regarding instructional testing services. It has not yet been reopened, but we have received a commitment from the college that it will be open for twenty hours per week beginning in winter. Uh, this is a critical practice testing service that affects students in uh one hundred eighty courses typically served by the center. This represents a really positive step forward and we are continuing to advocate that students' needs will be better met through expansion of operating hours to include some evenings as well as Saturdays. Uh, regarding student support services generally, um, in addition to to the limited hours at ITS, I wanted to share some examples of insufficient services that are impacting students on our campus. One is the STEM Learning Zone, formerly the Science and Math Resource Centers, where we're hea- hearing that students are being turned away when they're seeking tutoring due to staffing issues. In addition, the college is now down to four full-time counseling faculty, which includes all retention, career, and mental health clinician counselors to serve six thousand students, not including non-credit students. This is a ratio of fifteen hundred students to one counselor, exceeding the recommended ratio of one to two hundred fifty of counselors to students by six hundred percent. The lack of essential support services impacts student success and ultimately retention and enrollment. And this is something that we can do something about. Um, a few um LCC EA highlights. I try to always, as much as possible, end on some positive notes. So I'm very happy to report a resolution regarding our part-time athletic trainer. Uh, we recently resolved a grievance collaboratively that will ensure sufficient training time to support student athletes. Um, in addition, our faculty professional development program is implementing a new program to provide support for faculty members who are affected by partial or full layoffs to help faculty gain skills or currency in new disciplines that they will be assigned to teach. Given that four full-time faculty members have been partially retrained or fully laid off in the past two years, our hope is that this program will help faculty do their best work under challenging circumstances. Uh, last but not least, I'm very excited to report that LCC EA leaders had a unique opportunity yesterday to host a roundtable about community colleges with gubernatorial candidate Tina Kotek. It was an honor to hear faculty, classified student, and board leaders share their experiences at LCC to advocate for significant transformational investment in Oregon's community colleges, as well as other systemic changes helps to uh support students from underrepresented racial and ethnic minority groups as well as students with significant unmet basic needs. Even more heartening, after the discussion was Tina Kotek's public message of appreciation for LCC and commitment that, this is a quote, "Community colleges are critical to improving career pathways for Oregonians and as governor, they will have my full support." I don't know about you, but I've been working in the community college system for more than twenty-two years and have yet to have have any interaction where um someone at the level potentially to become our governor has such an interest and investment in our community college system. I will follow up and uh forward you uh the report, but also includes a photo so you can see our shining faces and our big smiles about the engagement of our uh legislative leaders in our community college system. Thank you.
That's great. Congratulations. Good work. Board members, you have a number of informational reports in your packet tonight. Are there questions or comments about any of these for the benefit of administration? Yes, Lisa?
Yeah, um. So I'll start with the, let me find them, the let's see, the HR employee dashboard. Um, so Shane, thank you for the analysis that I asked for last time showing um the diversity of our employee groups um over time. And you know, though we have seen a slight increase in culturally and linguistically diverse groups that are identified for faculty over the last five years, um, we've seen a decrease in diverse representation um by about five percent at the management level. But I I have noticed that over the last, you know, twenty years or more, which I know you haven't been here, but um, we don't, it doesn't really seem to move. I mean, these five percent margins are not really significant. It's like we kind of move back and forth within the same rough zones and um I, you know, I don't, I'm not asking for specific information tonight, but as we um, do you think about our three goals around um climate and as well as um enrollment, because I I do think that having a diverse faculty and and employee group and staff here at the college is important um to the population of students we serve. I I would love for us to be thinking about this within our goals.
Mike?
Uh, I'd just like to recognize that although Shane has a lot to do with policies that have to do with attracting and retaining staff, that, that's really the goal. That, that's a much broader responsibility than just Shane's. And so I appreciate everything you're doing and, uh, recognize that the entire leadership of the college has, has to work on this.
I, I just like to put a shout out for Brandon Gibson, who did the technical work beyond.
Great, I appreciated it. Thank you. Angela?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just wanted to comment, um, on the academic affairs report. It was really tickled to see the, um, welding, um, program, welding arborist for the Owen Rose Garden. I, I just, I was really tickled about that. I think that was fantastic, um, community engagement. I'm just delighted. Thank you for the report and all of them, of course.
Yes, Lisa?
Yeah, I also had a comment and some questions about, um, the academic affairs report. So I also enjoyed the inclusion of photographs in, in the report, Grant, so thank you for that. Um, and particularly enjoyed hearing about the culinary program. Um, I think that it was excellent news to hear how well that program is doing, um, as well as Rosa Lopez's email, and I loved hearing, I, I, I personally really enjoy getting these glimpses into the programs and ways we're increasing access as well as the partnerships. So one of the things that was mentioned was we now have a waitlist for a program, um, that we were considering eliminating. Um, I mean, not in its entirety, but, um, and so I'm curious, what are we going to do about that waitlist? What can we do about that waitlist?
Some of it has to do with the capacity of our spaces. Um, we've always had a limited number of seats in the culinary program due to workstations and otherwise. Um, but, um, we are also limited in, um, faculty. Um, that continues to be an area that's difficult to recruit instructors for. Um, and, and so we're continuing to look for instructors to expand our capacity and then looking for other ways that we might be able to, um, expand, um, through different hours or otherwise to utilize the space, um, and, and do things that way.
Great, and I, I did also want to mention that, um, I can't remember if it was in the report or a comment you made to me earlier about the amount, I think it was in the report about the amount of networking that has been happening in the community. And I, I can also report, I've heard from community members, um, about the visibility of that program and the excitement that it still exists because there was some level of messaging, communication, whatever, that led people in the community to believe that it didn't. So it's good to know about the networking as well. Thank you.
Yes, they're doing a lot of great work, uh, around that and partnering with other food agencies and others to, um, solve local problems that we have here, local issues that we have here around hunger.
Great, thank you very much. And, and thank you to all of the reports that were provided by staff.
Other comments or questions, board members, about information reports? I, I have one, and it actually, it's back in the, um, in the consent calendar. You provide, you always provide us with a personal appointments, and at least one board member commented, and I, I realize too that, uh, what we were presented this month is a format that's different from what we're accustomed to. And it's a, it's an amount of information that I think is somewhat inconsistent with the policy role the board plays. And I wonder if it's, it was intentional or if, if it was just an oversight this month that we got all that data about individual employees, and perhaps we might go back to that more abstract format. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that was odd. I, so, um, we're, uh, on the final flight path, colleagues. Um, brings us to the good of the order, unless anyone else has a comment that I have not found. Uh, this is the time in our board meeting when we invite board members to offer up comments or questions, and Austin.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Fantastic. Um, so I mentioned this in, I believe, the last board meeting that, uh, would love to get, um, workforce, uh, data presentation to the board as well as, um, a presentation about the STEP program, uh, within our community college and, uh, just get an update on that. Um, Steve and I actually attended a great, uh, presentation at ACCT about, uh, STEP and how it could be utilized not only for wraparound services, but also as part of enrollment's, uh, increase strategies. So anyway, I'd love to hear what STEP is doing and the good work that they're doing currently. And, uh, yeah, I think this is the second time I've requested this, but, um, yeah, I look forward to when that presentation does occur. Thank you.
For what it's worth, uh, Dr. Balder and I have worked on the, a list of, uh, presentations that board members have asked for, uh, including that one, and we do have them plotted out. And perhaps we can provide some previews of coming attractions so that you'll know when something you've asked for is likely to come up on an agenda. Others, yes, Mike?
Uh, I represent, uh, the board on, uh, ElCog board as well as an ElCog committee called the Lane Economic Committee. And President Bulger will be presenting to the Lane Economic Committee on November fourteenth. Uh, and they've been, they've been really anxious to hear from her and excited to hear from her. And that'll be a public meeting. Uh, maybe, uh, we can send out a link to the, in the time to the full board if anybody else would like to tune in.
Yeah, thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions from board members? Moving forward in your agenda, you have a list of coming meeting dates. In case you have any questions about those issues, uh, one, one thing we do have slotted on the work session for November sixteenth, if I remember correctly, is a presentation about the long-range, uh, facilities plan. Um, it occurred to me that we do a lot of talking about our bond measure and what we're funding or not funding and how we're funding it. And one of the things that a number of current board members weren't here for was the work that went into building the long-range facilities plan, the facilities improvements plan. And so we're going to bring that forward at the work session, just as an update and an information item, among other things. Yes, Lisa?
That's exciting. I look forward to that one. Um, something that came up at our retreat, um, was, um, the topic of governance and, um, how well the board understands the governance, um, system that's utilized within the college and how beneficial it would be for us to have a better understanding of it. And so, um, I, I know we talked at that time about having some presentation on, on that, but I think in light of some of the, um, public comment we heard tonight and the interplay between our policies and, um, the governance policies and procedure, that that would be a very welcome conversation as well.
Uh, let me update you on that as well. Um, Dr. Balder and I and, um, board member Mattel have discussed that. Dr. Balder indicated that she, um, was very interested in having the opportunity to participate in the college's governance system for a period of months before trying to, to bring back to the board uh, any kind of presentation about it. Um, and we concurred with her request, uh, in, in that initial discussion. If board members are feeling a sense of urgency, I'm sure Dr. Balder will be willing to, uh, orchestrate a presentation about the existing state of the governance system. So you, you just have to let me know your pleasure, and I would encourage you to do that offline, and we will follow up accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You know what, kids? We did it for this meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.